Tonight. I better watch out, I may not relinquish. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It's five forty-five. I'm gonna start the Hudson Public Schools Board of Education Truth in Taxation Hearing and Work Session for June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. We have everybody here who's going to be here, we have Dr. Hooper and Mr. Duitt are gone tonight. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you agree on that?
Pledge of Allegiance to comply with the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve our agenda. Over by Mark.
Support.
Don. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say nay. Motion passes. Next up, recognition of visitors and hearing of people present.
Um, one, Speaker Randy Weisler.
Good evening, friends. You can relax. I'm not gonna be too aggressive here, just wanna share a few reflections. This morning I was driving on Thirty Second approaching Hudsonville from the south. And the thing that struck me was this amazing structure with an eagle on one of its walls. For most of my life, I would drive past the high school and my first thought often was, that is an ugly building. It is no longer that. Rather, it is a symbol of the vitality of what happens within the walls of its structure. I was honestly in awe. Allow us for a minute for our minds to wander back to graduation night, it was hot outside. The line wrapped around the front of the new gymnasium, down the eastern sidewalk, almost all the way to the freshman building if you didn't walk that long walk. My in-laws were with us, they're in their late eighties. Standing at the southeast corner of the new arena, they contemplated walking to the back of the line. In that moment, someone involved with getting all of us into the building motioned for them to come to the doors. Let me just say, that was a huge relief. I realized we were in capable hands. No, Kathy and I did not accompany them, we went to the back of the line, we still found our way into the arena, we ended up with fantastic seats. Thanks to Doug's announcement that the back section of a four seating was not reserved. If you were there, it was epic. After graduation and after people started dispersing from the lawn, my graduate Nadia and I set out to find Dr. Vanderjack. We were not convinced the instant snapshot of the two of them when she crossed the stage was going to be good, we simply didn't know. We returned to the building in search of our super, but he was nowhere to be found. Yet we did find Mr. Beal, he was placing things from the event into storage, so we got a quick pic with my daughter and Mr. Beal and it turned out great. When my daughter received a copy of her official picture with Dr. Vanderjack, it was perfect. For various reasons, I've been around leaders since I was very young. In fifty-eight years, I've watched and learned and hoped to be a person of goodness in the fashion of the best of them. Honesty and deep integrity. Finally, I leave you with this, my recent graduate was mostly quiet in class throughout her years at HPS. She did not participate in many extracurricular activities here at Hudsonville, she is an excellent student, not in the four-point-oh club, but exceedingly close to it. She doesn't like to study, but she knows the importance of learning about her world and she has a deep curiosity about things and about people. A few days before graduation, my spouse asked our daughter what she would miss most about high school. She paused, but only briefly, and she responded with this, the teachers. Board, for all the negative things you hear from various stakeholders who'd like to be heard, if our teachers are what our graduates will remember most about HPS, we have wildly, wildly succeeded. I think of these words, oh captain, my captain. And these are our professional educators, I'm so honored to have three graduates from HPS.
Right, next up, Truth in Taxation Budget Hearing.
Thank you. So, a couple people to thank before we get into the muted hearing. So, just particularly I wanna thank people this year because there is so many grants. I can't say enough, so many grants. At least twenty grants we've never had. And they're not all little, they're not all small, they're not all medium-sized, it's just taking a lot, it's taken a huge team effort. From Manny in her department designing a new summer school program for special learners. Amy, her department, Kathy Lewandowski, just constantly redesigning and coming up with new, new programs that make a difference for kids. All that had to be staffed by, and the HR department, um, leadership. We have a newer position, position we've needed for school besides actually for a while, Lindsay Full House in our grants position. It's like Lindsay was getting new grant award notifications weekly on things that the legislature, uh, came up with last summer. Stacy Johnson, the business office, looks over all the grants, uh, does a fantastic job keeping things in order. Jody Martini also in the business office, um, she moves staff salaries around all the time along with Amy and payroll. Uh, Dr. Vanderjack, thank you for always keeping, uh, the kids at the forefront, keeping our focus there, it means it helps us a lot. And to just board for your focus and dedication on, uh, leadership through the process and good conservative budget, budgeting processes and helping us keep students at the front. I wanna thank everyone, this has been an incredible year, a year led, this is my twentieth year to do this and it's, uh, very, very different, I'm glad it wasn't my first year. So, here's the agenda for the hearing, we'll go through these things, we'll spend a lot more time on the general fund budget than the others as we normally do. But this is the highlight and this is in the packet, but I'm gonna look here on the first major slide at, uh, my cursor's not, uh, coming in, but the proposed revised budget column there, and I'll touch on a couple highlights. The biggest difference in the local line of revenue is just we, we had a lot more interest revenue than we originally budgeted. Uh, there's, uh, Stacy Johnson, the business office has found a new way to, for us, it's called the investment portal, where we're investing in treasuries daily. It's fluid and it's, it's resulted in over nine hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue for the district. Just, um, and that's just her work, compliments Stacy on that. The state line, we, there's so many new grants, the biggest grants are the thirty-one AA, that was expanded this year. It's, um, it's for meeting kids' needs, for social emotional development as well as part of what we can use for safety and security. And then the federal line, the biggest difference there from the original projection is we were able to spend more of this huge eleven-T grant, which is really S R three. Yeah. Then the other highlight down at the bottom, we received, uh, reimbursement this year, uh, other financing uses down there and sources. We received funds this year from a FEMA grant that we worked on in two thousand and one, reimbursement, we finally got the money. And we transferred those funds into a capital projects fund, so it's not in general fund, it's in a capital project, four hundred and forty thousand dollars to be used for, um, a future capital project. That's, those are the highlights of the general fund revised budget. So flipping over here, that general fund, uh, column is in there again, but also we lay on, we lay right beside it, the proposed original budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, fiscal year. And with conservative budgeting, we could budget more for local property tax revenues, we could be up to ten percent, we budgeted six and a half percent, that'll likely be higher. Our state, uh, line is where we budget for students, our, our new student revenue, we budgeted, uh, twenty students below where we are right now, just for conservative budgeting also. We did take it, we did bump the foundation allowance amount up by two hundred and forty-one dollars, that was the amount in the governor's budget, so we feel that's pretty, we're pretty, uh, confident we'll, we'll get that money. The federal line, um, and the board has this, so I know it's small for the public, but the board has this, um, in their packet, but the federal line is that change from six point nine million to two point nine million is back down to our normal level for federal grants. And the biggest changes are this huge S R three grant that we got, appropriation from the state, uh, some of the state's money. But that's a decrease along with S R, the regular S R three was almost, uh, half million dollars. So, those are the highlights of revenue. In the basic programs line, there's actually a deduct, a de-duck, and we had, this year we, we reclassified some positions, but we also were able to, um, down, downsize a little bit. Five to six sections, we didn't replace the teachers, just places where we're not really bumping up class sizes overall, but there's just places where sections we need to eat. So, we took advantage of some of that. And, um, then down in the other financing source use column, down there in the bottom, that big change there of seventy-two percent. It, it's really what we did last year, we're now back on a normal level, we don't have that FEMA grant transfer anymore. Under this fund, it's, we show it separately, this really is a subset of the general fund, but it's an activity that's in our general fund. This is W C E P, Hudsonville's the fiduciary for W C E P, this is their budget. Uh, the next fund, the, uh, building site sinking fund, the, in the twenty-three, twenty-four line, there's that land acquisition amount there. That's, that's what we paid for the house on Allen Street. We've got funds available, we don't have anything right on the radar right now, but there's funds available if we needed to purchase another property for this year. The site improvement line, um, that's where we, if we had to do some parking lot work this year, we could do that. And then in the last line there, the building construction renovations improvements is if, just to account for if we had a roof or a boiler, uh, in need of work. Under the debt service fund, it's kinda exciting that you see here the proceeds from up in the revenues, proceeds from the school, uh, lower revolving fund. See that, that amount that was in twenty-two, twenty-three was five point seven million, we were, we bumped down to two point four-eight this year. And next year, we're projected only viral, uh, a million only. It's, you're just looking at big numbers, that only is a million, but next year it looks like we're going to actually be repaying the fund. So, that's, uh, that's a sign, or it could be another situation where we refund the, you know, refi, we lock the balance in and sell some bonds to do that, we've done that a couple times. So, good news that we're paying back the fund. Over in this, this special, uh, special revenue account, about four, five years ago, five years ago, we were charged with, uh, taking our student activity accounts and actually putting them on the books, so this is statutory, we don't account for them during the year like this, but when you wrap them all together, that's like the student activity for elementary schools, high school, this is a summary of all those balances, um, here. In a way, this is something our auditor did. Community Ed Fund. Uh, this is the count, this is the early childhood center, the programming that's there, their childcare that's around the district, and the community ed programs that, uh, Fabiana runs. So, that's, that program is rebounded really nicely after, uh, COVID and it's, it's quite healthy, so they're doing very well. This little fund, we, it doesn't work out for us statutorily and with the regulations to actually have our early childhood center food service program run through Jenison Hudsonville, so we operate that ourselves. And the, the line down there, the excess of deficiency, uh, of revenues, the revenues are really under expenses, that's a transfer from what they do is they transfer funds in from, uh, basically, uh, what parents pay for daycare. That's, that's how that works. Cover that balance. The, this is really small, but this is the Jenison Hudsonville, the board doesn't really take action on this, we've got it here for information. But if you go to the second page, you'll see two lines, uh, really, really small, apologize for that, but there's a line in there for building in the twenty-four, twenty-five line, that's a million dollars. That's the Jenison Hudsonville Department planning to pay for renovations to our central kitchen.
Just to clarify, not the entire, there's still part of the kitchen that's back around the front.
Right.
The roof.
Right. Uh, that, just for the food service regulations, for some reason a food service fund can't pay for a roof, so we're gonna take the roof. Um, and then there's a line in there, you'll see down toward the bottom where it says equipment, five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, that's a reimbursement in this fiscal year. We already had the check where Jenison Hudsonville repaid, uh, basically reversed our bond fund for the equipment, four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for equipment that we, uh, put in the new high school cafeteria. Uh, this is one of the statutory portions of the, of the hearing, we've gotta talk about the tax rates and mention them specifically. So, in the general fund, our operating fund, this eighteen mils applies to the, uh, non-homestead properties. And those, this, um, this must be mentioned, that's, that's the max we can levy by law anyways, eighteen mils. Um, the next category there is our building site sinking fund millage, that applies to all properties in the district, and that's been heavily rolled back one year now. And so that's zero point nine-nine-one-one mils. And the debt service fund is also applied to all properties in the district, that is seven mils. So, that covers the highlights and a couple statutory things, are there any questions from the board?
In looking at the overall budgets, what percentage for the most part do you feel like you applied for the estimated budget for next year compared to the current budget for this year? I know it's not across the board, gonna be the same, but like a two percent increase on some of these, or was it line item by line item?
Uh, good question, so we eighty, ninety, ninety percent of our total budget is staff compensation. So, in the budget, fifty-three million dollars is payroll, payroll directly. And so, most staff are gonna, what's in this budget is a four percent raise for most staff, so, but you see that across the board.
There's an interesting question, are you asking about utilities?
Well, that's kind of asking, but in the sense you answered it because it's eighty-five to ninety percent is related to staffing, but obviously any increase they get, i- it's going to add back to that, so yes.
Our, our, uh, I didn't need to bump up utilities this year, didn't feel the needed to. Don't know if any being rate increases coming, we've got cushion built in with the original budget. Thank you, the administration line, that pretty much comes up to four percent, most of that category is staff. The monthly, the monthly budgeted extra for this year for health insurance is pretty low, that's one of those factors of that cap. Went up just a tiny little amount, I think they're a little low, but that's the amount we can pay for insurances, the amount the cap increased.
And then the only other question I had was on the building and site sinking fund, because of the headly amendment, the decrease in the millage, is that also one of those funds that in the future we could ask for? The number of years and like we did with the, um, May election, say, but if it gets smooshed down from the headly, we still are going to levy one mil?
So, the answer is yes. Um, however, I think the impact by the headly rollback on the sinking fund is not nearly as significant as the eighteen mils towards the operational cost of the district. So, you're, you're basically taking a sinking fund in which the funds you can see as that continues to grow. Uh, obviously during a healthy bond cycle, um, you hope you don't have to use your sinking fund, I don't see too much. But I don't think we're there, now if we had a ten-year sinking fund, uh, which could, you could see that drop, but it's, it went from one mil to point nine-nine. If it drops to point eight, that's a substantial change in that my left. But the answer to your original questions, we could, but it's an extremely heavy lift to educate the difference between the amount and the headly rollback, as we'll talk about a little bit later.
I mentioned the investment portal, so that's, I'm talking about that a little bit, if you please. Uh, our bankers, we meet at least quarterly, but we make, at least, I don't really think quarterly usually, no, no less than six months for our bankers. And we just, we told them that we need a better vehicle to, number one, um, not have all of our funds in regular bank accounts and like on their balance sheet, so. So it gave, so we're, we're, we've been looking for about nine months for a better place, something that gives us more security, that's so we're not just having the FDIC backing, and something that's very portable, very liquid. So, this, the product we use, literally, we've got daily availability and we're invested in treasuries. It slides back and forth to, from our regular operating account into the bank account. So it provides us more frequent, um, investment, uh, more flexibility in terms of how we invest in treasuries than we had in past. Right, we, we used to, we used to have to take it, the, the prior vehicle was taking it all the way back out of our account, mailing a check, since we, we could wire it. Going through my left, and now this just floats in and out of our operating account as we determine it, and we've got, we've got daily availability. So, it's, it's actually, um, invested in treasuries. It's a treasury fund, but it's the underlying investment that funds the treasuries, so we're getting, we've been getting just over five percent. And it's worked out very well. The student activity accounts, um, P T C boosters, booster, booster? So those accounts, right, right, they, they actually hold their own bank accounts. We, we have that umbrella organization governance, but we help them buy their liability insurance. That they, we help, we file their tax return, but those funds are not in this, this isn't like the actual building student accounts for Jamestown Lower, Jamestown Upper.
It was part of our audit, those are audited, correct?
Yes. Fund balance strong as a percentage, um, historically, we, uh, I mean, whether you like it or not, the state of Michigan is still largely driven by, or significantly driven by the auto mortgage industry, and that's the government's approach. Always carried with people, the fund balance, and it's like, it was ups and downs and downs and ups, so, um, I appreciate working on, making this, uh, financial place there.
You see an increase in fund balance as we navigated some of the COVID dollars, and now we're, we're, um, long-term plan bringing that back to that, we are, you know, we're, we, we definitely have work to do, this coming here with the board, with the administration, with staff regarding program evaluation. Cause we can't see this, we're not gonna see this clip at the end saying, okay, everything's gone, we, we wanna evaluate what programs are needed for this. What we can do to continue to support the kids in our classroom will be our priority. And they're, and they're not alone, I've received a few calls from other districts, um, at the end of last week, they're, they're not alone and there's some struggling and there's some other, I would say, non-public schools that are also struggling, um.
Yeah, it's been a big piece of the staff, you know, working for, as Doug said, is working for the last two years to plan, we were able to move expenses, you know, move positions out of the grants. It's a plan for, you know, an extra year running programs, um, past the major funding, so it's been a great, good, it's all been successful.
And just to be clear, maybe more than another year, so we're not there to the point of saying just another year, we wanna evaluate the programs to see what is needed in our classrooms to make sure our teachers are supported. Have you remiss to not thank Mr. Briggs? So I know we're thanking everybody else, but thank you for your work, thank you very much.
Yeah, I said you have to spend a little over an hour with, uh, Pat this afternoon and you were able to answer every question, I know Ken and Andrew spent a lot of time too, and so I'm very impressed with you guys. If you had, and the rest of the administration.
So if there are no further questions from the board, I would like to open up for public comment regarding the budget of the Truth in Taxation Hearing. This is an additional public comment, we ask they be focused on the conversation that was just had, you do not have to sign up for this one. I will open the floor, you have three seconds to raise your hand if you can. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board?
I'll just say y'all are awesome, and reiterate, like, twenty-eight years and y'all have constantly knocked this out of the park. So, from the community perspective, I want to second what the board has said, well done. Where's my heart to take your budget, Tom?
I will ask that you state your name, so we have, thank you, and only because this is truly a, a hearing of public comment, so. We just gotta make sure we get down into the public.
Getting really close to banging the scalpel.
I'm not gonna start the timer unless you need more time, anybody else? Anybody else with public comment? If I move to close public comment, the board will now take, not now, but in a few minutes they'll take action, and then Mr. Briggs will report at that point what the action items are, but I'll turn back to you. Mr. Ball has to continue the recording. Thanks again, Captain Tean, it's fantastic work. Uh, next up on the agenda, we have the approval of the consent agenda, so if I can have a motion for that. Only a few of us tonight, so you're gonna have that. Say it by Mark, all those in favor say aye. Any questions, sorry. Okay, any questions on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Now moving on to the regular action items, we'll back to Mr. Briggs.
Sure. So the, the action is the two thousand three, or I mean this later on here, the two thousand three, two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four revised budget column with a net change, uh, projected net change in fund balance of a hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I have a, a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget revisions.
I move that.
Don, any questions, thoughts? Okay, all those in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Passes.
Thank you, uh, again, the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget, uh, with, we'll be a little more specific on this one, with a hundred and five, over a hundred and five million dollars in revenues budgeted, um, a hundred and eight million dollars of expenses budgeted for a beginning deficit of two million, eight hundred
of two million, eight hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred forty dollars.
I have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five original budget.
So.
Move my don, support aye.
Support.
Ken? Questions, thoughts?
Pat, can you elaborate perhaps for, for some? You hear deficit? No, deficit. Can you just elaborate on that, how that deficit goes, please?
So it, we, we budget conservatively and I, I expected the first run actually of this budget to be over a five million dollar deficit, just with all the federal revenue and some of the state revenue that's expired. And due to the planning, the positions that have been, say, rolled back up in the budget, that's some of the savings, so it's not, it's not as large as five million. Along with, with the conservative budgeting, as I said, in the twenty, in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, trying to stay out of the weeds on this, but we have to, to be in compliance with the State Budget Act. We have to budget over line item, I like, see the, the overs right there? One point five million that we're, we're over budgeting from actual. If we go below in any of those categories, we get, you actually get a tough, a tough letter from the Department of Treasury. So because we have to budget over on these line items, we have, like in that year, we had a one point seven million dollar positive budget variance. And on revenues, it's the same way. We, if we set a budget for revenue, we can't be under by a dollar. So we have to be budget conserv, budget under what we actually think we're gonna collect. So in that year, we actually had a million dollar positive variance for that. So the, the two together was a two point seven million dollar budgeting variance. So if you look at that variance, that three billion dollar variance, it's easy to say it's gonna be down by a million, more likely down by two million, so. And as I said, we plan to leverage the early COVID funding so that we can run programs longer because it's, it's really hard to ramp them up, to staff them, to get them going on, on the ground. So we're really, and Amy can speak more to this, but I feel like we're really moving in a positive direction this year. We need to run longer and that was, the dollars came from the COVID money and now we're spending that, spending that money that was in fund balance.
So then there may be a deficit behind the budget, based on what we're seeing is through management through the school year, through various accounts, we'll pose that deficit.
So I also want to elaborate, the answer is yes to vary it, but, but it's also bringing us back to what we were before we were receiving all these federal dollars. So we're trying to manage the budget to get us back so that we are now doing the work we're doing with a consistent, reliable budget. I say that not knowing what the state is doing tomorrow with the state budget. But, but to your point of, we, we rely on these federal dollars, we didn't want this to be a cliff. So we're, we do have to bring us back to some reality and we're gonna see some of those growing pains over, you know, we, we saw it increase as you can see from twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three quickly. It disappeared quickly. We're gonna make that last as long as we can so that the deficit is not gonna be a one year, we fix this, but going from Pat's point of expecting five million, now it's about two and a half, we can get it to one. And we do that over the next couple of years. Now we're consistently working with a reliable budget from the state.
No, I understand. Yeah, yes, I understand. Again, I, I'm sensitive to folks hearing the word deficit and deficit spending and, you know, and, and it's, it's a manageable variance, it's a fairly manageable variance and it allows us to back to some of the people that have their funds. I think that's, that's the key message.
I think if it takes us to, if we just have, if we have a one point seven million dollar positive variance, that eighteen point six will be twenty point one.
And, you know, Ken and Mark, Paul, you know, we're, we've been at places where it's been really close to ten percent fund balance. So when you look at that in that perspective, it's like, okay, yes, that might change slightly, but we're a lot better off than we were ten years ago.
And we have a lot of systems in place to support our kids, which is also something we're navigating.
Million dollar close budget, it's two million, it's two thousand, it's easily manageable.
I think also our auditors suggested that we be down anywhere, you know.
True.
We are not a bank, to your point.
Okay, all those in favor of the approving the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five original budget, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Once again, our tax rates of eighteen mils for operations for the levied against non-homeside properties, zero point nine nine one one mils for building site millage, that's levied against all properties, and the debt service millage of seven mils, levied against all properties.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the tax rates for summer of two thousand twenty-four. But Ken?
Support.
Support my don. Any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
That would be interesting if you had passed.
I don't know what happens. It's why they play the game, isn't it? Okay, now moving on to the discussion items. Shane over there in your corner, Mr. Briggs?
Yes, so our maintenance department, we need, we need a new tractor for, this will be used primarily at Bower. We're gonna do the, I'll just do the recommendation first. So it's a John Deere fifteen seventy-five T. We bought two of these last year, thirty-seven horsepower. We're only asking for board authority to buy the tractor. I think we can do better, our department thinks we can do better, get the attachments elsewhere. And it won't go over our limit we, we need for board approval. So this, this recommendation for thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, it's just very, very similar to the equipment we bought last year. Greenmark here, just on the corner, just in the Jensen. They gave us a really, really attractive, actually the M I D O pricing that's, everybody could get, about forty thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. They gave us a better price. They called their government price of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. And they're right there, they've been good for service. And that's the recommendation from the department. Any questions on that?
So the pricing they gave us directly meets the contract and by the state price of the same facility.
It'd be phenomenal if we could get that price ourselves, but we can't, it's gotta be a government.
Yeah.
Individually, I mean, yes.
K R is not big enough, I don't do that. Still need somebody to cover it. I love doing that. Doesn't even take thirty seconds. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now the next, high school world language courses.
Yeah, so you have in your packet, attachment four is the listing of our world language courses that we offer. This is being presented as we've kind of gradually worked through all of the courses that we offer so that we have approval dates on the record that would align with court policy and so we've broken it up into chunks. This evening, you see our world language courses that we offer at the high school in particular. Some of them have some dates of approval, but most of them do not, so just asking for it. This will come as a formal action item at our next board meeting, but just for discussion here in the.
Surprised I have a few actually have dates. I've been around for a long time. Guess it's probably why they weren't paying attention when I came in. How did, how was, I'm, I think I'm in the county, I'm around there too. Okay, no questions, thoughts?
Is it all courses that we're either teaching or we will be teaching?
Yes, yes. Some of them at varying degrees and some not all, not all trimesters depending on certain enrollment. But yes, these are courses that we offer for students.
That's surprising, it's men, I remember one of them, he'll teach her in China.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it was board approved.
Yeah, I know.
We just don't have a date now, to be clear. We, none of these are new courses or candidates.
Right.
All right, I'm sure we'll circle back around. Camera bid purchase recommendation.
Yes, I'm gonna highlight some things and then Mr. Smucker is here, our technology director, to chime in when I get too far over my skis. So give me a, give me a signal Jeff or, or you want to handle it, so. So the, the review report, just to queue this up, we've been working for, Jeff, it's been at least three years to outfit the rest of our fleet. We started a project five years ago, six, six years ago, to have our cameras record and then wireless, wirelessly upload when they come into the bus garage. And it, when it works, it's a beautiful thing. And it's that key is just when, it's just a little, it's just flaky, there's too much going on there. And so Jeff's been working and our transportation director, Rob's been working to find a more stable solution. Some of it is in the wiring quality, just knowing how to wire a bus. They've actually worked out better ways to store video on the buses. This is not all about buses, but it's a big piece of it. And they've engineered better solutions along with our technology partner, Communications by Design. The rest of this covers filling in the gaps where we don't have video camera, surveillance camera, security, best word is security camera, coverage in our elementary schools. So this fills both those gaps. The bid tabulation, you flip to the next page, you'll see there where we're recommending that Hillard be the vendor to do the low, low voltage cabling in the buildings. We're also good, we're recommending them to be the contractor to do the work in the, the camera work in the buildings. There's a big piece, it's a lot of work, wiring the buses is really, really tough. So we're, we're, we're asking, we're gonna ask in the future for your approval for that. I'm just gonna follow Hillard along there. There's, we call it, you've seen voluntary alternates, but this is a mandatory alternate. We forced all the bidders to bid the cabling and cameras to add the sports complex into this. We've, we, we need that, that's something we need, security cameras out there. And then Moss, that are long-term vendor for us, they did the networking work on the current buses and they, they really understand that well and they gave us the, they're actually the only one that gave us a bid to do the networking on the buses. And it's, I clarified this, Jeff, please jump in, but it's not just networking, it's not just labor. They're actually providing a little server, a little video server on each of the buses, so. I know you don't have a mic, Jeff, but what did I miss?
You did well.
I did well.
As you always do.
You're too kind. Is there anything else you'd like to highlight?
Not really, I mean, we, we think the solution that they've come up with for the buses is gonna be a better solution and it's in place a couple of other places, other districts of the area and it's done well. Things, technology improves as we go along and bus video is, is one area that has, what we dived in five years ago, it was pretty new. What we're trying to do and it's, I think it's gotten better along the way.
So with any of these systems, is any of this viewed real time or is it for the most part to go back to see what occurred?
Be.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's now with the new capability we have, just wireless doesn't always upload the first time. And so there's actually a way to, in the old, old days, we used to have a pull the drive, but there's, there's a way actually to link in through the network, to link directly to the bus, wirelessly, which is easier than the bus uploading to the servers over in the tech department and then getting there. So it gives us with these little video servers on here, it lets, it'll store a lot more video, a lot more, many more days. Because now if it just tries to upload, tries to upload, never uploads, we lose, it writes over the little S D card.
So Moss's will handle the network, we're, we're handling all the hardware. You said cabling, cabling will be separate?
Cabling on the buses will be done, cabling and camera install on the buses will be done by Hillard. Moss will handle this video server and connecting everything.
So the actual wiring will be handled by Hillard as well?
Correct.
Is this part of this pay?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thanks, thanks, John.
And this will be paid. We've got, some of this, a, a small portion will be bound, most of it will be paid for out of the new, we've got the state, state grants.
When we buy new buses, do they come outfitted with technology, with cameras and or other technology? I'm guessing we're not the only ones doing this, right?
No.
So it's mad on for any.
They don't know.
But they do understand the specs that we're looking at when we purchase buses. So that conversation does happen where we don't buy a bus that we can't retrofit what we need to get it done.
They are, they are putting more cameras on exterior, they're coming with exterior cameras, right?
Yeah.
Like first time signs.
Yes. Part of that's based on the law.
And with Jeff's leadership, along with Rob and our transportation department, Rob Matthews and our transportation department, we have some principals that are just excellent. I mean, they're all using it, but some of them will go get on the server. They hear about something from the students during the day, they'll go investigate. So transportation residents, we'd have to get into it. They'll, they'll just call up and say, hey, this happened and this is something, some, can be disciplined, it can be just, can be anything. But we've got a couple of principals that are really, really doing a nice job. So they, the principal can actually look at the video from, from their desk.
How many people have access to this video?
Principals. It's really, we, we restrict it, yeah.
And then how long before we, how long is this tape kept on fire?
Thirty days.
Okay, and it just automatically.
Overrides.
Is that a law?
How is it? It's not a tape. Only, the only reason I say that, because I said the same thing, like it's not a tape.
And to, back to your point, Don, about live feed, I, I envision the movie Speed, right? When there's something going on and they wanna stream it. This is normally used for our administration where there's situations that take place, none of us, and they wanna investigate because quite often the story that might go home might be different than what transpired on the bus, both audio and visual, right? So they can, they can hear it too and that can impact some decisions that are made about students' discipline.
Questions? All right, thank you. Probably staying over by you for the food service building, the renovation bid recommendations?
Yes. So the, the first, there's a summary there of the, of the vendors that we're recommending for the total, total requested approvals of these, seven hundred, three thousand, ninety dollars. And then if you turn to the bid tab, there's a story, story here. So some. So some of them are really, really simple. We did get really, for a project this size, very, very high participation. Advanced excavating from Hudsonville, really no brainer there, they're, they're low bidder and they're, they've done great work for us for years. Over to the concrete category, Burgess is low bidder, again, they've done great work for us for years, so that's our recommendation. Category three metals, the Bennett Steel, I've not worked with them, I don't know if they've done work in Hudsonville, but OAK's done a lot of work with them. The reason they're, they're in the green there as the recommended bidder is the, the four bidders that were lower than them forgot a piece. So we went back to them and allowed them to cure their bid and they were like, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna eat that cost. So they, they, Bennett's, Bennett's the recommendation.
You said OAK does some experience.
Yes, yeah, they've done, they, they like to work with them. Interesting thing, this has not happened in my career, category four, we had a top. And so it took quite a while to sort out, but Great Lakes has done quite a bit of work, versatile, they both have done a lot of work for the district, fine work. But there was one of the, one of the pieces we got into where the, the alternative, voluntary alternate for versatile to remove layers, they didn't, they had it as a cost and Great Lakes has it in their base bid. So they're, we, we deem them to be the low bidder. And I say we, most of this work, Dan Rathburn, the project manager for OAK, does most of the pre-bids and bid screening. It's, that was Dan's idea, it's, it's great. Category five, we're, we're sole sourcing our controls, so control net is our recommendation. Six, DHE does a lot of work, good work for the school, long-term, successful bidder. Electrical, Grand Valley, did, they're, we deem them to be the low bidder because a couple other, the, the lower two didn't meet all the specs. And I do need to point out, as Dr. Van De Jack pointed out during the hearing, the roofing part will be paid for by Hudsonville. Our recommendation is to fund that because of sinking fund eligible, to fund that from the sinking, pay for that from the sinking fund. The rest of the project will be reimbursed by the Justin Hudsonville Food Service Department.
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know. I do know that, you know, that if you think about this entire process, at the end of the day, this building still resides on our property and it'll be a nice improvement to our food service, for those that had a chance to look at it. As we were talking about this process maybe a month or so ago, you could tell it needs a little bit of a picking up.
Oh, there's a question.
No, I just, I don't know if I know the answer. I don't think so.
What's the timeline of this?
Yes, so, good question, the, because it's not in the summer timeline for schools, it's gonna kick off right about the start of school. It's gonna need a lot of coordination with the department, but they assured us that they have several contingency plans to not only produce food, that they did produce somewhere else, but that they can get around, work around the construction to do the work right there.
The biggest challenge is getting into the building because of where the construction is taking place. There's one door in the back that, it's just, they're affecting the, the main transportation areas for getting put out, but they're, they're comforting it down.
But it'll kick off right about the start of school. We'll be able to get, I think they'll be able, we'll be able to do a little dirt work before that, but the main building stuff, main building work, rebuilding a freezer and rebuilding the loading dock will be right while, right while we're producing, right while school starts. And that, that helps us a lot for bid pricing.
Where if we wait until next summer, prices would have been a lot higher.
Or you'll try to do it this summer.
It's always a challenge to do work over the summer when everybody's doing their work. We find time in September, October, they're like, perfect, it's a little bit downtime, assuming the board does approve this July eleventh, but yes.
Good point.
Yes, we still have to, we still have to ask you to approve it in July. But as you, as you remember, our goal behind all of these bids the last several years has been to bring this to the work session and then come to the board for approval so we can have discussion and try to address these needs that needed prior to ask for approval.
Yep, I think they can do it, trust Mary McTum over there. Anything else on this one? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take it easy, Rathner.
Alright. Now I, I'm gonna ask the board, I mean, if you could, maybe who's gonna pass who's out, but, thank you. I'm gonna shift gears to Title IX. There are the new regulations that came out from the federal government for twenty twenty-four that go into effect on August one of twenty twenty-four. There are roughly sixteen hundred pages of regulations that are then broken down to a twenty-six page policy that I will bring to the board as a first reading. I would love to tell you that I have all those recommendations to discuss tonight, there's still a lot of work that has to be done. To be clear, there are twenty-three states in the country that have already filed suit against the Title IX regulations and they have won, so they're in what they call a stay regarding the Title IX regulations. Michigan is not one of them, our neighbors are, Ohio, Kentucky, they are, which is fine. We, we have our own, we have to move forward as if these go into place on August one. I gave the board a one-page and I highlighted some components that I would like you to just read through, not right now, I mean, you can if you want, but I want you to give your, wrap your mind around some of the challenges that we're trying to navigate as we implement this. So what I also referenced, we have policy that's in place that still is in effect after August one if an event occurred prior to August one. So let's just say something happens on the East Coast trip, summer science, the end of school year, and a student reports it when they come back to school, we still have to address it, but based on our old guidelines and policies. So, so we have, I will bring to the board two changes to policy that we still have to have in place and I'll also bring the board to a new policy and guideline. So the board will hopefully approve the changes to the old and a new one and then we have to address, address the administrative guidelines because that's not the board's job. You set policy, then we fix our guidelines, if you recall how that works. So when we do this with the Title IX, you'll see some of the changes that are required. It really changes the definition of sex discrimination, it does impact athletics, a lot of the, oh, you can leave that out, I've just already used it. A lot of the changes to Title IX, I'll be very transparent, are post-secondary education. So there's a lot of conversation about, I'll say, hiring practices, that a lot of those have to do, about classes that students can take, about pregnancy that we, we have, that I'm not, I'm not saying we don't, but a lot of these are based on post-secondary changes. So these are things that we have to do. In the past, we've had two coordinators, we've had a male and female, it was Mr. Petrolia and Mrs. Bernard, were our two Title IX coordinators. They were not decision makers, those went up to Ann Armstrong. But now we can have one that does all of it, if you will. So we're trying to navigate what is the best course of action for us. We have definition of staff, then we have definition of, what's the term? I wanna say, hold on. Confidential employees. The legal, from a legal standpoint, they're not recommended we have confidential employees because all employees should be treated the same when it comes to dealing with from a pre-K twelve system. But you might have confidential employees when it goes to post-secondary. So there are, there are language in there that we're not gonna recommend. There are language in there that we would recommend goes through the superintendent, but some might go through the board if it has to do with the superintendent. I spent about, I would say, four or five hours on Saturday, four or five hours on Sunday, and I'm almost through with the one policy. It's heavy, but I need to meet with our coordinators, I need to meet with Mrs. Armstrong because of her previous role. We're trying to navigate two different policies and all the boards are doing this as we speak to try to get this done. I will be recommending to the board the policy and our next board meeting in July as a first reading and then in August as hopefully a second reading and approval. If we need to have an additional meeting, I think I put that in board briefs already, we might have to have an additional meeting. I am not as concerned about an event that takes place on August one through our first board meeting in August because students just start to come back and there is a thirty-day window to investigate, we have time. So I'm not saying we have to quit get this done on July thirty-one because something could happen on August one. If heaven forbid, something does happen on August one, we're, we still have time to do a second reading of policy and go from there. I just gave you a two-page highlight of, to give you kind of overview of what I just shared. Are there questions on that, because I'm not done with the policy conversation, but are there questions on the direction of the Title IX policy?
So do you know if there's ongoing litigation in Michigan that may end up having a preliminary injunction filed?
The answer is yes, and it's the same argument that the other states have had regarding that ORS, oh, ORS, OCR has overstepped their bounds to do this and the definitions have become too broad from their standpoint. The answer is yes, and as of five-thirty this, this afternoon, I have not received any updates. The la, I've been through three webinars regarding, regarding Title IX. The last one that started, five minutes before it started, changes just came out to some of the, it was through Neola, so some of the states that they govern, so it could very well change. I don't think it should change the work we do to prepare for policy change. I also firmly believe that as a school district, it is our, our job to protect our kids, period. How we define that, the conversation about locker rooms and bathrooms and sports and all of them, those are things that we navigate as an administration and as a board, but I think at the end of the day, our job is to protect our kids and that means all of our kids. So I think we still wanna do this work if there is an injunction, I would not be surprised if there is in Michigan. However, I would not also be surprised if it is and then come September twelve, they say, okay, we're done, it's lifted, get it done right now and I think we should be prepared to move forward to this point. And I think there's a lot of good work in here, they've streamlined a lot, they've given us an opportunity to actually say that we can be the decision maker and the investigator, whoever is our Title IX coordinator. They can have an assistant, because of our size, I recommend that we have an assistant, but we wanna make sure it's not, I wanna say the right people, but in the right positions to, to be able to do this work. It's important work, we have, we've had several, I would say, on a weekly basis, we probably have one or two or three Title IX investigations that take place throughout the district for various reasons. Major ones are brought to the board and we have discussions on those. To some degree, some people are either all major, but I think there are some that are, there are some that are, that can be dealt with internally from there. There's conversations about the appeal process, that looks substantially different. The request for asking questions to the, you know, each party can ask questions to the other and the, and the coordinator can decide whether or not they wanna ask these questions to the other go from there. So I, that was a long way of answering your question that, there's still time and I would not be surprised even on July thirty-one. Sorry, can I remember? July thirty-one, if there is, it's something that goes into effect. Because I will also tell you that by this law, every staff member is required to be trained with the Title IX regulations. We can do that when school comes back, but we hired a teacher in October, they have to be trained when they start right away. It's not a, hey, next summer, we're gonna do it again type deal, so we have to go through training. We're working, we use a program to train our staff, not just on, hey, have you read the policy? But an actual training module that we go through, or we call them GCM trainings or Global Compliance Network trainings that all of our staff go through, we, I go through them every year. Sometimes we have to take one on ladder safety, but otherwise, you know, take them on bloodborne pathogens first aid and Title IX will be required every year, every three years for staff go through, but initially, everybody has to be trained. So working through those components is something I think, even if there is a stay, I think we wanna continue to work.
And, and I agree with that, I guess I'm just hoping that Neola also has an alternative, alternative options for language if you end up with a stay and then it goes on to the next level of appeal and gets to the Supreme Court and they say, okay, some of this language no longer is required, that's, somewhere at Neola, since that's who we pay to do this, has, has fought ahead to that to say, okay, but here's the sections of the language that appear to be still in litigation and therefore these are the items that, yes, right now we have to, but if this gets to the, to the Supreme Court and it's decided that these specific paraphrases or words are ongoing required, we don't have to redo all of this work again to get back to what's required versus chosen, I guess you'd say.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree and I, that's, I'm gonna, you're leading into the next part of my conversation that I'm gonna touch on in a minute. But I think that's part of the addressing some changes to the two thousand and twenty regulations policies. That way, we have a policy already, I think we need to address that one also because that will be what would remain in effect. The change of the twenty-six pages of the new Title IX policy is broken up into components that I believe there are components that can be changed out based on what comes out of any stay going from there. Which leads me, are there any other specific questions? And if there are, please add, and I, this is gonna be a heavy conversation because it's, it's big. And Dorothy's like, you're still reading that policy, I'm like, it is, it's heavy to try to put people in play and just to make sure we have the right processes to protect our kids. Which leads me to that second conversation that I would like to have, I would really like to explore potentially navigating away from Neola for our policy, who oversee our policies. Over the past four years, there have been other organizations that have begun to do policy work. Miller Johnson started doing it, Clark Hill actually started doing it, they were bought off by Miller Johnson, and so Miller Johnson was doing this work. Trune started doing this work in collaboration with Michigan Association of School Boards. If you remember, some of you might, years ago, MAS D did this work under policy and every time there was a policy change, you would have to reach out to them with your attorney. You would have to be the one as a district to say, hey, this, we heard this policy changed, they would charge you to rewrite the policy and you go from there. Now Trune is doing this work under their, for policies. We have some of our neighboring districts that have explored this opportunity, some have transitioned to using Trune. More districts are looking into it. It is a heavy lift to change policy carrier. I'm gearing, I'm pretty sure Mr. Davis, Mr. Sneedon, Mr. Hall, and I know it's a heavy lift. I did the transition in my former district. When I came here, I was glad that you already had made the transition, but there's, it's a lot of work to still stay up on policies. I would like to explore the idea of moving to looking at Trune. It would be a two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, probably an entire school year transition in which the board would approve policies that would go into effect, most likely July one of twenty twenty-five. The nice thing about, if we go with somebody like Trune, they are what we primarily use for our legal services. We do have others that we use based on whether it's purchasing of, of property or whether it's a, could be a major staff issue that is assigned by our insurance carrier with a different legal firm. But then every time we have a conversation with our attorney, they don't have to say, hey, let me take a half an hour and look up your policy, they wrote the policy, so they know what it looks like. There's some consistency, it does streamline our policies from roughly two hundred and sixty to maybe a hundred and ten because if you look at Neola, there are parallel policies with staff, support staff and students. And instead of doing that three times, they do it once, so that eliminates a hundred and twenty policies. And instead of doing that three times, they do it once. So that eliminates a hundred and twenty policies right there. There are some policies that would, that we will probably have to create on our own because we, we've had them, we expect them, and that's where we are. So I'm teeing it up tonight because I knew the Title IX conversation could lead into that. There's a, a district nearby that is transitioning to, to Trune right kind of now in this timeframe. And I have a great relationship with the superintendent, somebody that'll give me honest feedback about that transition, what it looks like. I've talked to others and they said, it's been great. And then I said, tell me more. And they were, well, I'm not dealing with it, somebody else is dealing with it. So I want to talk to somebody that's actually dealing with it, boots on the ground, and say, here's what it looks like, here's the support we're receiving, and go from there. So I'm looking for some feedback. I know it might not surprise some of you that have been around that this ebbs and flows and there's somebody, to, to your point, Don, I'm sorry to cut you off, but to your point, Neola's investment is into multiple states. The O in Neola stands for Ohio. And there's no M in Neola. I know they take care of Michigan, but there is something to be said about Trune being in your state. They're well aware on the legal, legal issues that are taking place and that would be, I simply want to explore, I don't know the cost, I don't know the time. But if you said, nope, we love where we are, we, we are caught up on policies, I think when I got here, we were a few years behind. The board has done a great job of looking at policies, first reading, second reading. We've had a couple, we have our third reading. I think we've had, we've had a good practice in place for implementing policy. But truly, this work is one of your jobs is to set policy. So I would love feedback and what, your thoughts here?
So not, so we see more efficiency with Trune, Michigan-based, legal provider, et cetera, so we see efficiency. Maybe for a little, it's, what I'm hearing is more that maybe a little dissatisfaction, but it's like, Neola does what they do across a number of different states. Based in Ohio, I believe Ohio has some control of that law, so a little bit of dissatisfaction there, a lot of efficiency potential within Trune.
Yeah, I, I can't say there's dissatisfaction. I can say that we're receiving a lot of generic language like every other district is. And I would love to receive Michigan-focused language. I, I can't complain, we've got great service from the, the staff that come here to meet with Robin and I and go through policies. Robin's learned their system with board docs of editing and going from there. We've been able to provide the board with, you know, the, the additional language, strictly language, those type of things. So the process, I think we've got it down, and the new process might be worse, I don't know, but something, I don't know. I, based on the feedback, I would just look at Trune. Good question.
Yeah, I'm not particularly fussy about this one, whoever can keep us on the right side of the law. And then if they mess up the policy, would Trune take some accountability to this?
Yeah, I think that's the one thing that you do when you sign an agreement, we have it with Neola also. If the policy, they, they stand behind legally their policies, that would be my expectation. Yeah, and again, we'll, we'll probably, this is one of those requests that I would have to really have a subcommittee of the whole entire, because that's a heavy lift. And I know at least one person would love to be on that subcommittee to look at policy, going from there.
Not look at me.
So, I, it, now, so I would like some, is that okay for me to at least?
Certainly. Makes a lot of sense.
And, and as you gather information, I guess, about cost and what it actually looks like from people who have experienced it, that's going to be valuable information.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll have, I, I should have more information on that, most likely even at our July meeting, because I will start doing some digging. Now, now's a good time of year to do that work.
And I'm sorry, I know you said it, but just so I have that correct, you're going to give us some more information before the first reading, the masses of pages of the updated policies and the new policy.
Yeah, I was going to give you the four, the fifteen hundred and sixty-six pages of, no, there's a twenty-six page policy that I still want to get to the board so that you can review it and see the recommendations we have for selections and what we're not selecting. Several of them have like three options, what option we've selected, and I want to be able, I want the board to be able to look through that. And if you need context to why we selected that, all I'm saying is that our July meeting, there might be a, a lot of discussion around it. Not just a, we've already discussed this, here's the first recommendation, first reading, we, we'll need to discuss it in detail on the eleventh. Does that answer your question, Don?
Yes.
And you're, and you're also stating, Dr. Vangerjack, that no matter which way the courts go this summer, before they come up with a final determination, it's still worthwhile and almost necessary to continue to be right.
I think it doesn't hurt for all of us to get educated and know what the expectations are. If we have a first reading on Ju, July eleven and it's approved, and then come August one, there's a stay, I don't have to bring it for a second reading, we can table it until we do bring it for a second reading. And there could be, at that point, there'd be a second reading with maybe changes and then a third reading. And that could be, if it goes all the way to the US Supreme Court, it could be eighteen months from now.
It makes sense about our special legal, Supreme Court.
So it depends on who you ask, because if you look at some of the lawsuits that have been filed, you have some groups that are neighboring each other, Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana, they're all together. But then you also have Kansas, Oklahoma, Washington, Alaska. And they're not, those, geographically, you know they're not right next to each other. So, but I do think the, the narrative, because they're all very similar lawsuits, are, because they're so similar, it's almost like there's a common theme and who else is going to jump on board? Now, a lot of it also has to do with politics and the election, so I, that, that, so I, I don't, I don't know. But I think we stay out of that and we do the work and see what it looks like.
Is the common theme overreach?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I think.
Overgeneralization and overreach, I think it's both.
I think the board had received an email from the constituent on, let me see, what date was that? On June eighteen, doing a cut and paste of an article from the Associated Press about it. And in there, it does talk about the things that the judge said was overreached. So if you didn't get that email or didn't know whether you should read it, I think that would be helpful for you to see where things stand. And again, that was on June eighteen.
I, I watched a webinar that I think I can send you to look at, I don't know, it's not mine, but I think, yeah. Maybe I'll send that to you. I referenced it in my update Friday. Maybe I can send that, it's about forty-five minutes if you watch it at regular speed. Yeah, that, it was just kind of an overview. It, it, in my opinion, it kind of summarized some of this, going from there. So if you have a chance to look at, I'll send it to you.
It's just so clear to you, I mean, this is from the little bit that I have understood of the things that are going on. There's going to be changes to how we would staff our department, so right now it's been Mike and Melissa who have kind of been the boots on the ground. That gets consolidated into one?
It doesn't have to. I mean, the difference is you had to have Mike and Melissa, we had to have two people, we recommended to have two people as coordinators. However, then there was, I'm sorry, investigators, then you have coordinators and decision makers. So now they can be the same person. So what was happening, you'd get two people involved to investigate, and then you had a decision maker. And then there was a different person that would be the person they would appeal to. So you have Mike and Melissa do the investigation, one might take the lead or the other based on the gender, the grade level, all, several factors, and would be the decision maker, and then I would be in case there was an appeal. So I couldn't be involved in any of the conversations. And, and traditionally, it would be a, hey, run this past the superintendent, so he's aware of what's going on. And then the last, they can't, because if there's an appeal, it goes to me and I can't hear the, I can't have made a decision already before the appeal gets to me. So that allows it to streamline. My recommendation would be to have, we have one coordinator and that coordinator could have an assistant based on the size of our district.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, there's a lot that goes on like you mentioned. But what Mike and Melissa have to do on a weekly basis, so that goes to one person, that's, that's a lot.
But those decisions, I mean, it, there's just so many decisions. And then there's kind of, there's sections in here that I'm going to highlight quite frankly and say, as the board, we need to discuss this. Because I don't have a good answer for the recommendation. Traditionally, I would have a recommendation for all of them. There's some sections, I don't, I don't know, we got to talk about it. So just be nice.
Thanks for spending all that time this weekend reading that.
Yep, it rained up north, which is great.
Okay, any other convo on that right now? Next up, we have the superintendent goal review.
Thank you. So I will go through, I'd like to go through, like, I'd like to go through kind of an update where I am mid-year with my goals. I'm going to trigger this, the best, like, Ken, from a technology standpoint. I think I had it figured out. Okay, so I have five goals that were set forth with the board. I, we set these in January, I took some feedback and made a couple modifications. And this are, just a reminder, these are for the twenty-four calendar year. So I, I really just mentioned another goal was to maybe look at a different firm to do our policies. That doesn't mean there are things that the board will recommend, hey, you know what, we really want you to focus on this or work on this. There could be other things, like, you know what, thanks for having that a goal, but can you just move on, we're done. So this is still a living, breathing document going from there. So I'm going to go through each goal. These are the goals that were set, this is how it was laid out, and I'll talk about each goal and then go from there. So the first goal that I had, had to do around testing and the methods. And the primary reason for this goal was because a lot of the testing components were moved to a completely online environment. And we've had a lot of conversations about what is the noise behind, behind the controllables that we have when it comes to student testing and uncontrollable. So we have an issues with online access, kids aren't used to using a certain computer, you know, we, all of them have Macs, Mac computers and you give them a, a PC at the end of the, for testing, they're like, I'm not used to using this, they don't need to mouse, those kind of things. So we had a lot of conversations about that, and then how to really dive into the data. So these are just, this is just how the goal was laid out. So here's an update on where I would say that as a district, when I say these are, I'm going to say these are my goals because I'm the only one that you evaluate. But these are really district goals that our team, and I, I will take pride in, in the, in the support that I received from, from Amy and Mandy and Pat and Ann and quite frankly, all the administrators, Robin, that really helped work through a lot of these goals. So a lot of in-depth analysis on the data, focused on SAT at the high school, the M step and STAR data. We started using a lot more with AI tools because not only are our kids using AI, but we're helping staff utilize AI, which has been instrumental. Amy's done a lot of work also when it comes to taking a lot of feedback and putting it into AI to generate summaries of things that we can focus on, where weaknesses and strengths are. Collaborating a lot with building principals, grade level chairs, I've had several meetings with building principals, working with Lindsay Bullhouse, Craig Steenstra, Amy Taylor, Kathy Lenidowski, and working, really digging into the data a little bit more. We have comprehensive evaluation of our assessment data in the fall, so we, we start to get more feedback from our M step data in the fall. And then it'll help us to really dive into those results and go from there. We want to continue to refine our strategies aligned, I'm not going to read all these, but that's kind of where we are as our, with our testing methods. We've also talked a lot about the, the amount of testing that's taking place. And is it, is it test exhaustion for students? Or is it teachers need like time to teach and not time to assess all the time? So we're having those conversations about what that looks like. So I, I put out here also resources needed. I want to be clear that these are not resources that I'm asking for and I don't feel the board is supporting them. These are just things in my mind that what might be needed moving forward that I might not know about. And, and I would say most of these things are things that, okay, we, we can do these things, we just, those are things that were coming to mind when I'm thinking about what resources do we need to continue this work. So continued PD when it comes to AI, that is ever-evolving and going from there, which is great. And data analytics, that I'm going to talk about in a second. And then enhancement data map system. So we have Power School and we are integrating Power School now with Unified Insights, which is led by the work, I think Kathy and Sarah. Wuttering, thank you, presented some of that Unified Insights of bringing all that stuff together, which allows us to bring also our behavioral data into that conversation. Some of the Swiss data we have, primarily, it's, it's more robust, I would say, at the elementary level. So bring that all together and say, how can we use this, how can we use this tool? So we have integrated that, but we need to be able to utilize it and we have not, I don't think we've begun to explore how, how helpful that can be. Particularly when it comes to some of the MTSS work that we're doing. So then, so this is, that was an update, and then there were some questions that were polled, that were posed by the board. And I don't know who posed the questions, so I'm going to just put them all out. And I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about this, each one. And I might ask for clarification if it's not your goal and you want to, or not your question, and you're like, this is what I understand it, I'll go from there. Any initial insights from the data this spring that will driving discussions for the fall? So with our district improvement team, we review STAR data, first to eighth graders, we look at past fail rates and semester requests at the high school level, the dialogue with our leaders in the fall as they work to set building-specific goals. So, so we take the data and then they also, as a building, have specific data. Are there buildings that, there are areas that we want them to focus on? The answer is yes, and the principals are doing that work because they are seeing their data. Some of our other key data, if you get to question number two, are we identifying grade level school, subject-specific areas that need more immediate attention? I'm going to say yes, but I'm not going to share that here, if that makes sense. But I will generally tell you, there are some buildings that they are working also, we're supporting them. But there are also grade levels and some of our, one of our initial concerns was what does that transition look like from fifth to sixth grade? And that's been a standard concern of ours. However, now we have a five-six building. So is it a fourth to fifth question? Is it a sixth to seventh on the north end? So we've added another layer to find out, is there a transition concern or is it a, is it content area? So are there, are there standards that maybe are not taught to our expectations at certain areas and how are they assessed? So, so the answer is yes, and I think we've honed in on that to a lot of the work. Not only that Amy's doing, but that our principals are doing going from there. Were we recently identified a new math curriculum at the elementary with, with Bridges? How is the evaluation of our elementary reading? So that's always ongoing, just to be clear. So we are always evaluating. We, we do not focus on math, so we can ignore ELA. At the same time, we're, even though we're not assessing science and social studies and every grade level, we're doing that work also. There is an ELA, an ELA committee, you remember at our last presentation, they talked about reading and about math when Kathy went and showed the charts about how we're doing. So that evaluation of the program continues with all of our elementary particularly. And then the work through MTSS, our intervention programming, the district improvement process, the pre-K through twelve ELA committee work. So there are committees for each one of our content areas and the ELA committee continues to do their work and dive into it deeper. Even though the math committee is the one that maybe has spent the most money this year, that's one way to look at it, if that makes some sense. With teacher administrative evaluation, law changes earlier this year in places, I'm concerned with student growth and assessment data, how do you see this affecting your goal? And then I'll look at five, how do you anticipate the evaluation changing, in fact, if you use a goal? So I'm going to, I'm going to put those together and say, there is no correlation between assessment and evaluation, and here's why. It has been a flawed system since the beginning because it's not reliable data towards an evaluation. Your evaluation is based on a, and I'm not going to say mine, mine is based on a calendar year, which is different. But if you think about a teacher's evaluation, it is for a calendar year, which for them would have been twenty-three to twenty-four. Their evaluation is due by the end of June, June thirtieth of the, of the school year. And the data is not released and tied to the teacher until the fall. So if you look at the system, it's always been flawed because you're getting the data a year after. So you're taking a teacher's evaluation data in the fall and if you, if you base it on their evaluation, it would be for the year in which they didn't even have those kids, if that makes sense. So there is no correlation besides, the only, the only comment I would make is this work is important to do regardless of the ties to evaluation. Student assessment and the impact it has on learning is, to me, the number one priority of our schools. Curriculum is the number one thing we do with our kids, with all due respect to the rest of everybody else's work. But this is a priority to prepare our kids. So there are no correlations. With my, with my evaluation, there, excuse me, there are changes with my evaluation, which we're going to go through the rate of reliability when we get into our August meeting. But with that, there is, the correlation to me is more based on STAR. But with that, there is, the correlation to me is more based on STAR data, which would be local. And you can look at true girl, true, true growth. When you assess students in the fall, winter, and spring, you can see growth targets, and you can see progression of a student during that school year. If you do it once a year, you're a year off, if that makes sense. Any questions on this goal? I'm not trying to go too fast, but I also don't want to. Okay, goal number two, share pertinent information. Sorry. Get feedback from other constituents. This was the goal. You can see I put a plan in there to accomplish that goal. There's also a timeline to accomplish that goal, going from there. I would say that the biggest issue with this goal, not issue, the biggest component, was the non-homestead change and make sure that was shared. That's a major shift, as we talked about a little bit earlier, going from a four-year with a two-year headly, go to a four-year non-homestead with a two-year, two mil headly rollback. It's always good to get other feedback in other meetings. I did not schedule community meetings in homes. I processed doing that with our principals. And the idea was that when I, when I did that during the bond proposal in 2019, it was very beneficial because it was my first, first year and a half, and I got a chance to really get out there. So there were not, I had a couple, I would say, informal home visits. We had people over to our house that were from an HEF dinner. And it was great to have conversations about the direction of the district. And I've had a couple informal people that it turned into a tell us more about the district conversations. But nothing was scheduled from a, an actual home visit. But I did have meetings with every PTC and every PTO. I know several of you attended a meeting or two when it had the PTO meetings. Those were great to explain the non-homestead. And I do want to thank the work that Stephanie Fast did, helping draft the, the document that was shared with our community about what this looked like. I spent a lot of time on the phone with people. Every time you talk to somebody about the non-homestead, it turned into, hey, tell us more about what you're doing here. So it was a great conversation piece, get a chance to meet people and talk to people. Had meetings at every staff meeting, and went from there. And then also had listening tours throughout the district. So Ann Armstrong and I did listen tours at every staff at every building, as well as two administrative groups, the secondary and the elementary, and get a lot of feedback, questions and concerns about anything from, you know, the bathrooms aren't always clean in our building, to there's too many dandelions in the front yard, to how important the MTSS work and the PBIS work is and what that looks like. So here's an update on where I am. Conducted the, the initial inner-school advisory meeting in January. I don't know if, Mark's been to some, Dawn's been to some, Andrew's been to some, Barb's been to, so I don't know who was there. But included discussion on non-homestead. I really think those inner-school advisory meetings for those that have been able to attend are very informational from our standpoint. We've got a really good group of leaders in the buildings that when there are concerns, not only do they come to those meetings and express them and feel comfortable, but they also have no problem picking up the phone and giving me a call because of our relationship to say, hey, can you tell us more about the playground equipment that going in over here? Or those kinds of concerns. So those have been very helpful. See just some other actions, continued the inner-school advisory. We talked about the listening tours. Do we continue to do them once a year, twice a year? We still have many pages of documents to try to cycle through, so we're working on those. So Ann and I are meeting this summer to talk more about what that looks like moving forward. I think they've been very helpful. But I want to make sure there's action behind it, not just, hey, thanks for your feedback, and then we walk away. So want to continue those. And then the one thing that continues to come up, once the fieldhouse opened, is they think that we're done with our 2019 bond, which if you go over to Park Elementary, if you look at over at Bowers parking lot or the high school, you know it's not done. ECC is going through changes. But people are asking, what's next? What's next? And I think as a board, we need to have that conversation about not only what is next, but when is next, and how much can, is available when that happens? And go from there. So that was probably the number one question that came out is, when are we doing this? When are we doing this? And I will tell you that every, almost to a T, every person I talked to had a different idea of what to do next, which is fine. We could probably come up with over $3 billion worth of stuff to do, but we're not going to be able to generate that kind of money. That was one of the biggest. So continued logistical support for scheduling, conducting meetings. I do want to thank the board and your schedules. You actually have lives. This is not your job. So taking the time to be there and going to meetings and going from there. And then resources to address, I mean, that comes into. And when people have concerns about, why can't we do this? Sometimes there are resources that we can address them. If there's an issue with wood chips on one of the playgrounds, all right, that's a different conversation than, you know, we want to put air conditioning in our building. How can we do that? It's a little bit of a heavier role. So some of the questions from the board. What feedback did you receive from the home visits in March and April? I talked about the non-home visits, but the accessibility. I do also feel that I go to most of our events, fine arts, athletics, and I talk to parents when they're there also. Most parents, and I wouldn't say parents are comfortable approaching all the time because he's here watching kids, I don't, but there are some that are not shy at all. And they want to make sure that if they have a question or concern, I can address it. So I feel like I'm out in the community enough to talk to parents out there also. How many home visits did you make? I shared that just a minute ago. While gathering feedback on district celebrations or concerns from ISAC, PTO, booster meetings, have you noted any themes or concerns? There still is, number one, one of the, kind of, I'd say, part of multiple PTO meetings was what are we doing with the diversity work? And I know we've had the conversations here, and I can relay the information that we've, for the last two years, we've been doing X, Y, Z. Here's where we are. I feel like we're making good progress. I will address that, I will address that in the next goal here. But, so that is one thing that came up, the growth of the district. There are still people that believe we have a thousand kindergartners coming in next year. If we did, Pat would not have a budget concern at all of the deficit going from there. So, so those are still conversations about what the, some of the biggest concerns with our district. And there's always a question about communication, about how, you know, we didn't hear this, we didn't know this. It doesn't matter if it's social media or website, Apple seed, emails from me. They want more, and they want consistent communication. So it's not that Mandy's using a blog and Pat's using an email, and I'm using a website, and Amy's only using Apple seed. They want some consistency. And I think we continue to work on that as a district about, and that's even talking about our sore holes that has to do with communication going from there. And February, March is listed. Board members were invited to February, March staff meetings. I put on there that staff meetings, we talked to building principals about that. And it didn't seem like that was the right environment for a board member to be, to have a, I would say, not a sit-and-get meeting, but, you know, they, they go to meetings and then they break up into their department chair and going from there. I do think several board members have made a phone call, knocked on the door of the building, saying, hey, or said, hey, can I swing by today and walk the hallway? So stop by. I've received many, I would say, carbon copies of an email saying, hey, I'm going to stop by Bauer today. I'm going to stop by Georgetown or the high school. And hopefully, they have made you feel welcome and that they're not just dropping everything because, oh, a board member's here. But that there's that, hey, do you mind, is there a time I can stop by? And I think a lot of you have been able to do that. So that's been helpful. We've had attendance at inner-school advisory, diversity. I know Mark and Greg, Nick's been there, Andrew's been there, Ken's been there, to the AC meeting. And then we had staff appreciation where we, you know, you all had a chance to walk through and hang out with staff, shake hands, appreciate our staff. We can't do that every day, although they deserve it every day. Questions on goal, goal two?
Not really questions. I just, I want to thank you for some of the things we did to open it up for us to attend some of these meetings and to foster some of those relationships. And I know we have for the most part, the schools that we get to visit, yeah, it's open, open arms. Hey, coming in, they want to show off what they're doing there. So if we can continue that going into the next school year by looking for, whether it's on the rotation of PTO meetings or things like that, I think it's a great opportunity.
I think it's, and I'm open to any suggestions that you have. I, I would not, I would never say the doors are closed. I just think there's more productive way, like a staff meeting is not a productive way for a board member. It just doesn't, but PTO meetings, right? I think they love it when you're there and just listening and going from there. Or, or if there is an event that's taking place in the building, I think we can continue to do that. I know I want to continue to do that. I think it's really helped having conversations and even a comfort level. It's not so much a board member's here, it's, hey, next year.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to be. And then certain principals are really good about inviting us to things. And it's, yeah, it's about relationship and showing that we support the staff and students. So the more we can end up the better.
All right, goal three, diversity advocacy. Talked about supporting the diverse student population. Went through the plan, what the plan was moving forward. I'll give you just a quick update. We did, I can't thank Mandy enough for her leadership on this. I know you're here. I would say this if you're not here also. She's really done a phenomenal job bringing along a diverse population of constituents also and have a common goal. I'm not saying we have all agreed on everything, but we know we're going in the right direction. We tried to land the plane, but we don't want to land it until there's a clear landing. And coming into the summer, the question was, you know, hey, we're around. Who else wants to meet? And the answer was, nobody. And I'm not saying nobody, but generally speaking, people are like, it's summer. So, and we're like, but we're here. And they're like, yeah, but we're not. So, so we will reconvene in August. I don't have the date in front of me, but I'll get the dates to the board going from there. So continue the work. I think we're in a really good place. We do feel that we would like to bring a recommendation to the board this fall. We want to do it before school got out. But keep in mind, just because we bring something in the fall, doesn't mean we have to wait till the fall of 2025. But we have to have those discussions too about what that looks like. And there's, there's been a lot of good feedback on the direction we're going. I think we're in a really good place when it comes to that. So those are some of the, so there's kind of where we are. You can kind of read through that, looking at the data. We do want to do this. I know we did this a year ago. Once we start school, we have a population of students that leave. I do want to get as much feedback as we can. I think we had 115 left from K through 12, which is pretty standard for our district. And we, I think we had 28 responses last year, which was a lot. A lot of them, hey, dad got a new job, mom moved, you know, whatever it is. But there are some that we want to get some feedback. So we'd like to do that again in the fall to gain some more feedback of what are the decisions people are making when it comes to moving. And does it impact this work? Because I think that's also a conversation we're looking at.
Would assume that that's also some data that's garnered when people come to the district as well? Is there?
I don't know if we do that as much, I'm thinking. I think we just take them, right? Our counselors know the why.
Yeah.
And our administrator, building principals, a lot of times there's a story. If there is a story, we do have to investigate the story before they come. We don't, you can't get expelled from another school district and just think you can come here or have discipline or attendance issues going from there.
I think in the future, that might be interesting too, because I think that may show us how we're improving in this area, hopefully.
So that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I do know we get information about where they come from. So are they coming from local? Are they coming from a propeo local? Are they coming from out of state, in-state? Are they moving those kinds of school of choice? We get that data, but that's not, that's data we have to enter into the system, not by inquiring, hey, you're new, why? Maybe that's something to look into. Let me think a little more about that. It's a good question. And we ask when they leave. I mean, it would be interesting to say, hey, we're coming to you because we, this is, you're doing X, Y, and Z, and that interests us. Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, from a resources needing, really the last one is, when we ask for board approval, we're going to have a lot of dialogue. It's not going to be a, here, let's do this in a minute. But also, you know, if we need additional resources, can the board process what that might look like? And resources could very well be time, it could be a process. There's a lot of things that could be involved in that. I don't know what they are, but that's the one thing that would be a request. We had a lot of questions with goal three. We did not have any questions. Are there any questions now as we, I know Dawn just asked, but are there any additional questions?
I believe there was at least one name on the board to meet this, wasn't there, Mandy? One, one excited individual.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it was kind of like, well, we'll see in September, right?
Yeah, I think there was openness to it. It just schedules in a line for there to be a majority of people at the same time.
And like I've said in piggybacking with Dr. Danny Jakes, I've been attending probably the last eight meetings. And I can really see, you know, from when you would ask a question, everybody's heading to go down, two people I engage in, you know, stuff. And I think that's all we're going to have.
Okay, goal number four, construction, which we are, we're still heavily into. And just want to kind of give you, you know, the continued communication. This is a little bit bigger, in my opinion, a little bit bigger goal because it's not just about the projects we have going on, staying within budget, making sure there's timelines, making sure our students are not impacted adversely to a large degree when it comes to construction, but also what's next. And I think this is where it tied to that other goal about communications with our community. I think that's one thing as the board, when we get into, maybe in the fall, maybe the spring, as you wind down, the question is always, is, not only what's next, but is there a next? And the answer could be, you know what? Here's where enrollment is, and it's stagnant in different areas, or it's blowing up here and it's shrinking here. What does that look like from a district standpoint? So we'll, we'll have those conversations. But we continue our meetings. Tomorrow morning, we have another meeting with construction, several questions arise. I will, this is not about me, but I do feel good about my involvement in the construction progress. I talked to our construction manager, and I asked, I'm assuming all districts are like this. And they said, no, you're the only one. So I, I do feel it's important because I want to make sure that our community entrust us with their, their funds. And we want to make sure that we're doing, doing it right. So I can't thank Pat enough for his leadership on this and his patience in dealing with me with sometimes some, I'm not, I'm going to say this, and we've had these conversations regarding the roof at the fieldhouse. They're not all, not everybody goes to that meeting looking forward to it. There's some anxiety because you never know what can come up. So that'll take place, that, those are, go continuing. And then there's, and I'll go through this a little bit. Communicate the impact on current construct, on current construction and additional opportunities for students as well as potential timeline. I'll talk about that in just a second. But then timeline completes some of these projects. And you can see, I think we're, we're on target for all of them. Bauer Elementary is ready to go except for the parking lot. Park Elementary is transitioning smoothly. Just what, we got a transition park. And we have, they need 11 weeks to do it, and we're giving them nine and a half. So Park kids are coming to school on August 21st. Let's just hope that there's, anyway, we're working on Park Elementary. We're getting there. It looks good. The gym looks great, but they have that, as you remember, they got to transition from half the building to the other half of the building, and this is the summer to do it. So going from there. And then early childhood center, thanks to your approval at our last, or two meetings ago, we get that going. I did put on here the, the food service because you haven't approved yet, but we'll come back. So some, here's my progress. I will tell you that I think the non-homestead passing, you know, 60 to 39, 61 to 39 with just the four years. And even that two-year headly rollback, you see that traditionally, the first time through, that does not pass because of the education around it. And that still passed 54 to 46, which says that people trust the work that the board is doing and that we're doing here, and that's a move. Action-taking, it talks a little about my action, talks about pending action, continued oversight, focused on the projects that are going on, getting ready for Park, the elementary transition, completing by the fall. And then community use planning, and I'll talk about that in just a second. There's a question regarding that, I'll address it when it comes to that question. And then just continued coordination with construction architect teams, adequate funding. I do think that the board will have to have serious conversations about what this looks like moving forward. If it, if the scope of the project in the future is too large, then do we have discussions about multiple, whether it be architects, construction firms? then do we have discussions about multiple, whether it be architects, construction firms? I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get closer to that time. Some of the work that Forrest Phillips has done, Catlin has done on the other side of the state in the larger districts, what they've done. We are in that conversation. We are the, one of the largest schools in Western Michigan. Our high school footprint, I believe, still is the largest school in high school in the state from a footprint standpoint. If you want your steps, go to the, if you want your steps, go to the north entrance, which used to be the freshman campus entrance and swing by the fieldhouse and then come back. So go from volleyball to swimming, go get your steps in. All right. So here's, here are two questions. Previous discuss pointing out sharing with board member, broad communities, some deposit interest. This is a great question about, you know, we opened the fieldhouse, but how does that impact other facilities? If you've been by the fieldhouse this week, you realize it's packed with kids. It's packed with programming. We're utilizing those things. I think this is a great opportunity for us to use some of that to have discussions, maybe an apple seed. I'll get with Stephanie. How can we highlight, listen, we've done this, but what else does it allow? So some of the work we're doing at ECC when it comes to the exterior and the restrooms will impact pickleball, which does not impact the district, but it impacts our community. So I think we need to share and highlight some of those, some of those components. And then what is the timing for communication with public opportunities for public use of the fieldhouse? We traditionally wait a year before we have opportunities in new facilities. Now they're using it now for community use, I would say, through Rebecca Fabiano and our community ad program. But we're talking about open gym or open weight room, open track, those kind of things. We, we're a little bit more time. Hopefully by Christmas time, the end of the calendar year, we'll be able to have those conversations. We are still navigating a very extensive punch list at that building. We are still completing the punch list for the choir room and it's been open for two and a half years. But it doesn't impact the kids, but there's little things. There's a, there'll be a, there's a post that didn't get two coats of paint. So it has the, you know, the number, the product number of it. Those are things that we have to address going from there. Is there something going on outside? Okay, here it is.
I didn't know if it was like, do I have some, do I have to worry about something?
All right. So there's, any questions like goal number four? All right. I know I'm taking too long here. I'll go quick. Communication. Review current formal and informal communication protocols, methods, specifically those related to informal board needs, aid and decision-making. So that was the goal, talking about that, with the foster relationship between the board. There's a timeline on here of April 30th, and I, I want to state, there's two questions on the date. I don't think that date, I don't think I should have put a date. I think it should be ongoing. I think that is something, but I, I did feel an immediacy to address this and not say ongoing. To me, sometimes I look at ongoing and says, I'll get to it later. But I think this had to be addressed right away from my standpoint. So I, I also went to, and I think, I think from our, from our entire district standpoint, I think we could have done a better job of this. So here's where the action taking. Gather initial feedback from board members regarding communication needs, expectation, understand my role in addressing staff and board communication concerns. Monitor the effectiveness, improve communication strategies, tools for efficient communication. Those are some of the resources, tools. I also put on there, training session for board members. There's, there is a MASB offers training, which many of you have been involved in. And they have one, two, three, four, there are five, a new one just came out. And they're talking about equipping yourself with skills to build relationships and navigate challenging situations in the community. I don't know if you need that. I'm just saying that's another area that the board might also want. So there's a communicating effectively in difficult times, advanced community relations, media relations, collecting feedback, leveraging feedback that comes out this year. So those might be areas that the board might say, you know, I want to, I want to be involved in this also. So those are, those are some of the things I've done. And I'll, it's probably easier if I just regress some of the questions. There's several questions on this goal. So I'll address them. What future opportunities will the board be able to engage with staff and community? I think Nick asked a little bit of that. I talked a little bit about that from in-house advisory, DAC, the PTO meetings. If there are other suggestions that come up, like, hey, we heard about this group, can we, let me know. I want to be able to foster that for you if you feel uncomfortable or you're, you're like, hey, I want to, can I attend this? Or maybe there's a PLC meeting at the high school with staff. You're like, hey, can I just pop around? And you're like, I don't ask, let me know. I'd be more than happy to foster that to get you into places where you feel like you can make informed decisions about, about your role as a board member going from there. I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I would ask you to go there to make administrative decisions. But if there's something that's coming to the board, and I know that when we had the math curriculum, the bridges, several of you went into the elementary and said, show me this before. I'm kind of going to vote on this. Show me what this looks like. If there are areas you want to grow, you want me to help support that, let me know. The timeline, I talked about that. I think it should be ongoing. I suggest updating the goal. I can update it in the document. I think what, if it's okay, maybe I'll talk to Dr. Hooper and say, can I just put after the date, adjust it to ongoing at the, at the summer update? I don't want to change a document that was already shared with the board, so maybe I can just add that to it. Because I do think it's an ongoing goal. Can you provide some examples of how you are working to foster relationship? I, I think I've, in my opinion, I think I've done a much, I don't know, a better job. But I continue to want to hear more from people that have concerns. And listen, whether it's somebody that comes to a board meeting, whether it's a board member that has concerns and said, hey, whether it's a staff member that has concerns, since we've talked about this goal in 2024, I have not heard from a board member that has concern with that, or a staff member that has concerns with a board member. So it's about saying it's been honeymoon since January, but I, that has not been something that's come to my attention. If there is, and it comes to my attention, I'd be more than happy to help address it if possible. Sometimes, sometimes it's not possible to navigate that, but I can help to do that. My questions are, okay, so these, I don't think there's a question in the four, but it gives a question in A, B, C, D. Please provide and such each those actions that you consider to be such significant that you want to bring to the board. I think the listening tours of staff and administration, those have been very significant. Those have provided a bridge between the staff and I would say administration, board about concerns that people might have. So I think those have been very beneficial. Do these actually change the work relationship? I think it did because I think it continues to build trust. Every time you meet with somebody, for the most part, I'm not saying everybody, but most times when you, when you meet with somebody and you, you open up that line of communication, you open up the trust of the next time they have a concern, you might get an email from them saying, hey, we talked about this. I've had that with a couple of teachers. Like, hey, we talked about this. Can you look into this additionally? And here's another thing that came up. I think it adds to that. Did you seek input from parties involved in this relationship exercise? I'm not sure what the question, I, how has this relationship improved? I don't know. I don't have a good answer. I don't, I could ask somebody to clarify the question, but I don't, I don't know that one. I don't know how to answer that one. Did those involved in the relationship building endeavor have any feedback to concerning the results of this experience? I don't, I don't know how to answer those two. But please clarify my notes.
Can I just, please make sure I, those aren't my questions, but. So, you know, again, made an emphasis this year, since January, we're going to try to, you know, get some of the board members out into the buildings. And if I'm hearing you correctly, we really haven't had many reports or any of concerns from the teachers and all of that. So is it fair to say, hey, by trying to be a little bit more intentional about fostering some communication that may be helping?
Yeah, let me, I'll address, I'm, um.
I just want to make sure I heard.
Can you hold on to that question? Because I want to address that question.
Yeah.
But I want to see if it's, well, it won't be. Let me just, I'll get to this in a minute. Okay. So I would say, to, to answer your question, I have not sought. So I'll give you, our last SOR survey provided a lot of feedback.
Yep.
Right? And that, that gave me some context to where there might be concerns from community members, staff members, different members that we might have issues with, whether it be a subject area, whether it be a new idea, whether it be a person, whether it be a board, whatever. We've not sought that feedback generally this past spring, sent another blanket survey out. So for me to say that everybody loves everybody right now, I don't want to overgeneralize, but I've also not heard, I've not had a staff member come to me and say, I, I'm tired of this. Are you going to address this or not? We've had a couple of community members for public comment at board members, at board meetings, address board members. I've had conversations with some of them to talk about the work that we are continuing to do. And I think it's getting, in my opinion, I think it's getting better. We also don't have 67 people commenting at board meetings. And I'm not suggesting you don't comment at board meetings. Don't misunderstand that we're closing down public comment, but I, I think, I think that, that has dictated a lot of, of the narrative also.
That's great. And I think it goes back to, I remember months ago, you made in the comments, it's, it's it's easier to, to meet somebody when you actually sit down and have a conversation with them, hash things out. Most people are fairly agreeable. I'm paraphrasing what you've said. But I, I think that speaks to it. And I, I know, and I've shared with a couple of board members things that have been said to me by some staff in passing, hey, you know, so and so on the board. Boy, I really am growing to appreciate their perspective on things that has changed. So, so hopefully there are people, again, we're not all perfect. We're all best friends. But, you know, there's, there's been a concerted effort, I think, from your part, our part, to try to, you know.
I think a couple of things, yeah, I do think, I know Mark and Ken and I went to the ISD and had conversations about having difficult conversations. And really, the number one component is understand where somebody is at. You don't have to agree with their position, but it's a lot better to respect their position, what they have going from there. So I think that's, I think that's helped, in my opinion.
For sure.
How have these experiences improved your performance as a leader? I, I believe, I, I don't quite, I don't know how to answer this based on experiences. But I, I believe I have a strong relationship with our staff and our community. I'm not saying everybody loves me. I'm not, I'm not, I get that part. Because not every decision makes everybody happy. But I think overarching, I am using the last SOR data that my, I'm going to say approval rating, even though it's not called that, is consistent where it was three years previous, prior to COVID when we were going through this. So I think overarching, I, I think I, I think my experience are continued. And I think this is just making me stronger, having more conversations, meeting more people there, having deeper conversations with people so that we can navigate any noise that comes our way. Do I think we will have more noise come our way? Probably. But I also know that I think we're more equipped to be patient, understanding, and listen more when we go through that. Hopefully not another pandemic, but you know what I mean. Are you aware of an outstanding relationship issues? I had mentioned that, not to my knowledge, since I've started this goal in 2024. The timeline, we talked about the, the April 30th. What did the assessment, there wasn't an assessment on this goal. I think the assessment is feedback from the board, from the staff, from the community. If we want to submit formal feedback and, and ask these questions in a survey, we can definitely have that conversation maybe in the fall. And maybe that's a good idea to say, okay, how are we doing? And going from there. I don't know if we do, we don't do a full strategic plan survey, but maybe we look at something. And I think feedback is always a good indicator on are we going in the right direction going from there. What suggested improvements did you or will you recommend regarding communication procedure? All right. I'm going to say this, and I'm not trying to, I don't want to frustrate anybody, but I do think there are times when I wish a board member would send me an email, just me, or a text and say, give me a call because I have a question. I, I've never been a big fan. I'm going to, I'm going to pick on a teacher here. If a teacher had a question from a parent and they email the teacher and they copy every administrator and every board member and the superintendent about a, a writing assignment, I think it's really hard to build a relationship. If you have a question about something, and it could very well be, you know what, that's a great question. Can you send that to everybody? Or I respond to everybody, make sure the board's on the same page. I do think there are a lot of emails that go around the board, with the whole board, that some will argue are decisions and those should not include everybody as a board. There are times when I can imagine a board member might email myself and then Barb and Nick as the president and vice president. That's fine, but I can just as easily get an email from, and I've gotten them. Hey Doug, can you give me a call from Greg? Can you give me a call about this? I heard this was on, pick up the phone. Done. It's like, okay. I think we have, I've had conversations with many of you. That to me, I just think we could come, so that would be my only recommendation. And if there are things that I can do to help foster that or clean that up, I'd like to do it also. That was it regarding goal five, questions. There's two other questions, but they're not about goal five.
I do, I do think that this is one of the, one of the areas that an executive in your position is that this is one of the most essential areas for you to excel in, or for any executive to excel in. And I know you have the capabilities to be able to do that. And I would just, I would just encourage you to keep on looking for those opportunities to be able to, if you see your relationships that aren't, you know, working, get in there and, and do something about it, because you are in a unique situation. You're the only one of your kind in this district. And I don't, I don't say that, I don't say that at all to, to diminish what you've done. But rather, this is an enhancement that can take the abilities that you have and make them even stronger.
No, I, I think all, I think everything I can do, I can always improve on. So I'm not taking that as I am horrible at everything. I didn't read it that way or understand it that way. I did, it wasn't. But I, I will also, two things I would say. Number one, I can't, I can't fix every relationship between two people in which two people may not want to coexist in that relationship. But I also don't want to hinder it, to make it worse, right? I don't want to add fuel to a fire. I don't want to say, oh, yeah, yeah, I know, I know. It's, that's not my role. And I also know that I can only do so much because you also control your own narrative. And so, but that's definitely something I can continue to foster. And if there are underlying currents of something that, hey, this is going on right now and you need to be aware, I would dare say, bless you. They're not, I'm not aware of everything. Bless you.
Like I said, you, you have so many things that you are extremely good at, extremely good at. And like I said, I want to commend you for those things, but the things that, sometimes the things that are toughest for us to do are the things that we tend to share. And I'm, I'm speaking of myself because I know what it's like. Okay. But anyway, just, I, this is important.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
And we had two other initial questions. What resources do I not have that would help any of its goals quicker or more? I don't, I, I feel comfortable enough to ask the board if there's something that I might need to support any one of these goals. Yeah, so the answer is I don't have any. And then what support do I need from the board? I think just open, honest, and preferably direct conversation. I, I am not, with all due respect, an email to the whole board about something you're not happy with me about. It's hard to read in context when I look at who it's sent to. And I'm not saying that it can't happen, but it would be really nice to start with a, hey, Doug, this is going on. Can we, can we talk? Can we have whatever? Even say, hey, can you sit down with a couple of us and talk about this and that? So I don't know. That's just where I am. But to Greg's point, that's something I can work on as well. That was it. I'm sorry that took almost an hour, but I wanted to make sure it was thorough and went from there.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, it's fair enough to give an update and context on those things. Any comments, questions, any of those?
Yes. Thank you, Doug, for answering the questions, continuing to recognize that some of these are ongoing goals. And I think all of us agree that being lifelong learners is all part of what this is about as well. And like Greg said, we can all make improvements. I think as a board, we took a look at ourselves when we talked about the code of conduct. And I think all of those pieces and parts are what continues to make us stronger, not only as a district, but relationally. So I appreciate that. And I have to say, I'm astounded at how much information you keep in your head and keep reading. With all the things that we talked about tonight, I, it's just amazing to me that one person can manage all of that. And so I appreciate it.
Just to be clear.
I know, I know. But the recall of data and information with the help of your team is still amazing. And you all do it very well. So thank you.
Okay. Chrome table? Can I start?
Looking at you.
Sorry. Total, so we put up, Nick knows this because I received a phone call right before the board meeting. We finally put up.
We finally put up our speed zone signs, um, starting at Bauer Elementary, and the best news is they're up. The, the fun news is it thinks it's a school day, so it's blinking, telling everybody to slow down at four o'clock this afternoon. And people are calling to complain about the speed zone. We'll get it fixed, but we put them up and now it's, it's, it tells you to slow down and it blinks and it's. And we're putting up, uh, Forrest Road will be next, we want to make sure they're in a good spot, five, six building, Bauer. Jamestown, lower, trying to think of all the built.
Georgetown?
Georgetown, maybe. We're still working on that traffic light and that's a whole nother, and I think we're getting closer, because we did an independent. And I, I think we're getting closer. There was a question about can we put the same traffic signal, Nick, Nick asked about the traffic signal and I, and I, about the overhead Chicago ride. How they have the blinking, and it's a great question, but because there's no divider involved, then the answer is no, because you can't cross. Some people can't cross in that short of timeframe. You'd have to jock, and not everybody jocks when they cross, or the kid in the stroller, it just doesn't work that way. So, but we're going to be able to look at, um, we will look at other options for these. So that's up at Bauer, so if you have feedback and people are like, it's not even school and it's blinking, say, the district is aware. We're going to learn how to program, we'll program ourselves, and we'll, we put the whole calendar in there, so besides snow days, it works out great. And then I'm going to hand out the stratosphere, which we update monthly. Stephanie Fast does an amazing job updating the stratosphere. I'm going to ask the board if we can go to this like quarterly. Uh, I feel like we're giving you the same data every month, something might change. If there's a major change, testing, enrollment, class counts, um, all of that stuff, then we will update it. But maybe if we can do it like every three months, if they're changing, that way you can go from there. We, we tried this, it's been a year, we've been handing this out every month, through to look at. I, I've not received any, uh, the only feedback was can we add some behavioral data, so we're working on that. I've not received a, this is great, I think, besides Ken, you know, this is great, thanks for doing this, so I don't know if anybody looks at it. But I don't want to waste the time on it.
I love it, but I'd be fine quarterly.
So I think quarterly, if that's okay, we'll, we'll get that to the board and go from there. And besides that, I got a picture from Summer Science, oh, there's my phone, uh, Summer Science, they made it to the Badlands. Uh, picture and none of the boys had shirts on, so it must be hot.
They look like they're.
Working on the bus?
It was, what was that?
The A C working on the bus?
The kids would not know, but the driver would, because the bus has air in the front for the driver and then for the kids. And the kids won't get it until they absolutely have to. But yeah, so 20, uh, 25 kids made it out there. So yeah, we'll see if the bus makes it through the tunnel tomorrow. What was that? No, uh, no, we just, we had a, yes, there are 20. But yeah, they go through the tunnel tomorrow, no, uh, Wednesday, they go through the, over at Cathedral Spires and they go through the, the tunnel. They might have taken a little air out of the tire. They're worried about the air, I'm worried about the air conditioning going on at the top, but it's alright. Might come back to another bus recommendation after that. Totally kidding. They're in good, they're in great hands. No, do that. That, that's all I have to, thank you.
Nice job on the goals, okay, very good, very thorough, well thought out, just a nice job. Nice job on the budget prep. We always think the community, because we can talk about budgets, but it's your support of millages and bonds and sinking fund. That allows us to do a group, so thank you to the community always consistently. Student achievement, again, you, you hit it again tonight in curriculum, everything's important, that's our primary goal. Yeah, I think she wants this a few years ago now, a couple of years ago now, and I think it's good. And then maybe a couple of things that we want to, it may be worth a retool as we move into the quarter as well, not with the heat data, but some additional training.
Yeah, any suggestions?
Got it? Are you good?
Yep.
Okay, sure. Um, just want to thank Nick for standing in for Barb the last couple of meetings, thank you for handling that. And I know Barb's not here, but thank, I want to thank her for the detail she went into ahead of time to prep for these past couple of meetings. And I appreciate the fact that she was looking up our head and made it clear for all of us.
Couple of things, I have a granddaughter who's involved in Eagle Camp, I think they call it, she's doing math. So I quizzed her last weekend, she got everyone right. My younger grandson said I did give her enough questions. Another thing, um, I don't know if, maybe, I don't know if we put this out there or not, but I saw something on the news on Friday. Casey Glass's daddy.
Stole my thunder, right?
Okay, Casey Glass's dad, that what, put into the Michigan Coaches Hall of Fame? And he was the, what, the first coach that, he, he never coached varsity, just all freshmen and stuff? So what a, what a fantastic testimony that is for, what, what, what?
We were notified about a month ago about it, so we kind of celebrated them and then it just hit the news last week.
Yeah, okay, I guess I didn't remember, what was his name?
Jack.
Jack.
Jack, okay, there you go.
He was a school wrestling coach.
Yeah, but yeah, it was a nice, nice little thing on the news.
Freshman football, that's what I mean, he was, he's still around.
Yeah.
Happy fourth, I can't believe it's like the end of June.
Just like to thank the board for your support, it means a lot to all of us. Staff in the central office and just staff across the district, it means, it means a ton, can't say enough about that. And there's a couple of signatures we need, Rob's going to need that for the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to echo Ken's comments, yeah, thank you for all the work, to the whole team, for the budget and everything. And that's, that's one of the things you hear about in the community continually too, is just how they want to ask about budgets and the buildings and all of that. And we can just all speak with such great confidence, that, you know, we're extremely fiscally responsible, always have been and hopefully continue to be that. So just, that's a point of pride, I think, for our district as well, so there's a lot of hard work that goes into that, so thank you. I think your comment too about, um, asking some entrance questions could be really interesting as we look at the further programming, curriculum wise and all that. What's currently drawing people in, but what are they looking for? I mean, like, always looking at competitive advantages in the space to draw students in. I know you all have a lot of your place already, but something to consider, but I'll throw that up there. Thank you all. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So who?
My Don. Or Greg? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Regard.